You know you're muted, right?
Okay, all people in the chamber a little bit.
Hi, Kwame, hi Bob. We're waiting for Terrell, but we'll get started. Oh, I think I hear her on the stairs, so. I'm just gonna mute for a second so she gets settled.
Okay, today is Wednesday, July 23, 5:16 PM. I am calling the Special Laws and Rules Committee meeting to order. Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch serving as chair. In attendance, we have Alderwoman Pastie, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, and subbing for Alderman Dennison is Alderman Tierney. But Mr. Dennison, Alderman Dennison is on Zoom. Hello, Bob? Can you hear us, Bob? We can't hear you.
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you.
So I can't hear you because we're unmuted.
So I thought Terrell was in the building, but she's not. So I was just gonna change the order of the agenda, flip old business legislative procedures to the first item, if that is good with everyone. So there was two issues that we were discussing about archiving all our legislative documents. I had a conversation with our city clerk, Elisa Tinty. She felt that once everything is archived, they will be able to keep on top of a system that then gets established and that we didn't necessarily need to hire someone full-time to be a designated clerk. So she will take that request to finance for allocation of funds. And then I was thinking about the situation where we're going to have, we need a system. So, and based on things Elisa said, that a lot of the documents go back to the 1800s and some of them are books and we might need special equipment to actually scan things. I thought it would be good to reach out to our acting Ulster County Clerk Teller. I hope he broke. And he was definitely a wealth of information. He sent me information on a local records management improvement fund grant and I will send this information out to everyone. This will, a new application will come out in the fall.
Great.
It's a local government records management improvement fund provides grants to local governments. These grants assist local governments to establish records, management programs, or develop new program components. It is a competitive program, awarding grants based on the merits of the application. You can do an individual municipality. You can do a shared service grant up to $150,000. Project categories includes disaster management, document conversion and access, file management, historical records, and inactive records. So the county receives this grant every year. They receive about $40,000 and it does. And it does say shared services. So that is something I would be interested in looking into with the county to save some taxpayer dollars. So up in Tompkins County, Taylor said that they have done this with the city of Ithaca. And the Tompkins County Clerk finished archiving everything for Tompkins County and then just began archiving everything for all their municipalities up there.
Wow.
So he is going to reach out to their clerk. So Taylor is thinking, if, you know, this is, he's just throwing it out there. We have to talk to IT, like everybody is what it needs to do. But they have a software program they use called IQS. And so possibly working to piggyback off their system. And he said that we could use this grant to help pay for equipment we might need or the employees or even sending it out if we needed to. So it sounds like there's a lot of options. And then I know the planning board also got, has new software in place. And I reached out to that company as well just to see if they've ever set up something like this for a legislative process for document storage. So I'll just pass their information all along, everything I've just reported out. So I think that just sets us off.
And is IQS an Ulster County grant or is that the one in Tompkins County?
It's what we use and I believe they might use the same one.
Oh, so that, okay. So then, and this grant presumably would also pay if we were to hire some kind of consultant to come in and sort of talk about a system if the company didn't already have.
Yeah, we might be able to just do our own scanning and then put it into the system. It just, it just depends. Yeah.
But we could hire somebody who would just come in on a limited time basis.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I spoke with Elisa about.
Right.
And she's.
So that's what she's gonna bring to finance?
Yes. Yeah, okay. So I'll just pass this along to everyone, to Corporation Council, to Elisa, to IT, and the mayor and hopefully this gets the ball rolling.
Yeah. Thanks for making those calls. It seems like a.
Yeah.
Like it's not gonna be as hard as we thought because other people are already doing it. So we could take advantage.
Yes. Yeah, and I thought it was natural to Taylor since a lot of our documents are more historic in nature and books and things like that.
And they have Ulster County documents as well because maybe it predates Ulster County. I don't know. The city of Kingston does. They want to convert them so it's a city.
Okay. All right, so now we're going on to new business charter reform. So, you know, the council is initiating the formation of a charter review commission, which will be tasked with evaluating and potentially updating the city charter, which serves as our city's foundational governing document. The commission that would be created by the council will have a period of 24 months to analyze the charter with the intent of enhancing government efficiency, reinforcing democratic practices, and tackling matters such as public safety and fiscal stewardship. Through this process, the commission will induct possibly public hearings, information gathering sessions to gather feedback from residents prior to proposing any recommendations for ballot measures in 2027. The initial phase of establishing the commission will involve the laws and rules committee crafting a local law. That's what we are here to do tonight, that the council must approve before October 2025. This will ensure that we are able to choose a commission by the end of the year. Right, so tonight, we will be working on the language for the local law. So we must fix or provide a method for determining the number of members of the commission and whether the members will be appointed, elected, or both, and prescribe the manner of appointing or electing the commission members. If the commission members are to be elected, the local law must also establish whether the members are to be elected at large or by districts. If the local law provides for elected charter commission members, they must be elected at the same election at which, if there is a proposition. So I believe that we have decided to forego having the commission be elected.
Correct.
All right.
That's right.
All right, and then.
Chair Hirsch.
Yes. Ah, Bob. Go ahead.
Hi. Does this include the administrative code or is it just the charter?
Just the charter. Administrative code is completely separate. But we could end up having, so I guess it's, there is some question still how much of the charter could be changed just through the administrative code.
Okay, good.
And I think, from my understanding, that's part of the review process is to look at what needs to be changed, see whether you actually do have to do a referendum or whether there can just be changes made to the code. And I think we discussed that at one point too, that that would be sort of the first task of the charter review commission is to see to what extent the charter needs to be redone, whether it's entirely redone or whether there are certain sections that really need to be looked at. Does that coincide with your memory, Bob?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Yeah.
You know, having read the charter, I'm not necessarily, I know there are some sections that need to be updated, but on the whole, I'm not as freaked out as some people are about the charter.
Well, it hasn't been looked at in quite a number of years. So no matter what, it deserves a look. 1993.
It's way beyond with the state, the state department of state.
No, I agree. It should be looked at.
Yep.
Assuming it was written in 1896. So Sarah has done a lot of great research and put forward examples of a bunch of different local laws that have been passed. And did you get that? If you want to take it from here.
Oh, yeah, so I've been in touch with the National Civic League and they, and I've also been in touch with NICOM. So those are the two groups that I was reaching out to. NICOM was very informative. That's the New York Council on Mayors. And I was speaking with their general counsel, Board Dottromo, and he's the one who sent me the different examples of what a charter, what enabling legislation might look like. And he also just confirmed that basically what our local law needs to say is some of these go into greater detail than others. Some are about just updating the charter. But he said, basically, what you need to cover is the number of members and how they're gonna be selected. I mean, that's basically what we're talking about today. And then the language will be developed. And looking at this, the one that sort of seemed to be, I mean, not that we would be using their exact language, but the model seemed to be the city of Utica, which was fairly sure it had talked about how the commission is established, the membership vacancies, officers' duty, compensation, service of public employees, public and private hearings, technical assistance and submission. I was charged with the common council. It seemed to cover the bases of what we need to do. Of course, with our, we would be putting in our own language. But some of the others seem sort of long and probably not as relevant, but maybe other people had different views on that.
Well, I think one of the first things we need to determine is the number of members. Yes?
Yes. The number of members and how they're selected. And we had had a meeting in May where we talked about having a total of 18 members, 11 selected by the board, the board people, and two by the at-large, so that would be 11. And then we talked about having seven alternates for a total of 18. What I brought up at our last meeting was the idea of civic lottery, which is what a number of communities are now doing. This is a new tool, probably made possible because now we have automated, you know, sort of technology that can do this, in which you create criteria for what you're looking for. You invite people to apply. And then there's a, then based on the answers, there's a program that can go through and just sort of generate, here are the people who fit this criteria. In other words, you're looking for 50% women or you're looking for one person for every board. You're looking for whatever the criteria are the city might set. And then that generates a list of people. And I asked, when I had a phone call today with the town clerk in Decatur, Georgia, which has initiated the charter process. And in fact, their first meeting is August 6th. I talked to that town clerk and she said that they are doing a hybrid of having half, or actually it's a third in their case, a third of the members selected being in the lottery and then two-thirds selected by their commission and also by representatives of the various boards. But that's just because that's how their city is organized. They have a commissioner for our government. It's very different than ours. But my question to her was, how did the civic lottery process, you know, how successful was it? And she said, we were really surprised by it. We thought it was great. There were, we set out the criteria that had to do with where people lived. You know, we wanted somebody from each of the voting districts. We wanted to know people's ages. We wanted to know their ethnicity, gender, you know, just to get it. And the categories they set up reflected what they considered the diversity of their community. And the answers that they got sort of filled that prescription that they had been looking for. And she said, what was so exciting to us is that there were people in the community we had been trying to get on boards, like good people we knew who agreed to do this. Rather than being on board, they thought this would be a great project to be on. And there were also people who they had no idea were in the community who made them, you know, who were excited by the idea and then made themselves available to be part of the lottery, to be involved. So they had 125 people volunteer through this program to be involved. And they had chosen 10. She said, you know, we thought about the number. We wanted to, in the end, she said, most of our meetings are large. We have like committees of like 25, 30 people when we're doing projects like this. Understanding that, you know, that there would be breakout groups and other things. But, so they had a third of them be selected by the lottery and then the other two-thirds by the various processes that they use in the city. But she said she had talked, when they talked with their consultants, the National Civic League, they said each community does it differently. Some communities do half by the civic lottery to identify people that are unknown and then half by the general selection process that they use to put people on boards, you know, in their city or amidst by council. So she said, in her, in their conversations, everybody does it differently. It really is just based on your own city and what you think is going to bring the best people to the process. She said they have an application process, like most cities, for people to be on boards. So the people who've already made it through that application process and are on the boards were like the candidates for, you know, for them. But there could have been an application process also. That's the way they chose to go. So there, in other words, there are lots of different ways we could choose to go. But she said that initially, the reason they had such a low number for the civic lottery is there were some people who were hesitant about using it, but after the results came through, they were very excited and said, this is really, wow, this was really great. You know, it brought together a lot of people. We were happy to see Joe from commission. And in the introduction, when people were filling out the survey, it had two parts. The first part was a way for citizens to just talk about what they would like to see changed. How satisfied were they with the government? What would they like to see changed? There are some standard questions. Then when they got to the bottom, after they'd answered questions about, how would you like to see your city operate differently? Then they were asked, would you like to get involved? And then they could fill out the survey. So they got a lot of good input who didn't necessarily want to be involved, but wanted to give input. So that was how they started building up their list of people who wanted to be engaged. And their initial way of reaching them was through a postcard mailing that they did to all the households. And then they followed up with social media and websites and radio and a lot of things. So it was sort of two-fold. Get people interested in the process and excited about what's happening and then see which of your community members want to be engaged. So that was how they did their process. And she said, so far, so good. We're very excited. We have our first meeting on the 6th and then they have a community kickoff the following day. So they have two community meetings built into this process. So that, and those are the shorter process also. But again, they're gonna be looking at, should they just make a few changes to the code or should they do a complete review? That'll be the first thing that they tackle. So that's, that's, that's the report from her. So it was exciting. She's very excited about the process. And she said, the city is excited about doing it too because, like Kingston, it's been over 20 years since they had a charter review. So, yeah, so we're not alone about their input. It's a big process and, you know, it's a comprehensive process and that it should be done every 10 years is what their state suggests also. Yeah, but they didn't do it. So neither did we.
So I don't. So like the, like we have a number, right? But do we necessarily need to spell all of that out? I don't believe we do in the law, right? It's just more about appointments.
We have to, we have to put out the method.
Right.
And also the number. And the question is, do we want, is 18 the number we want? Can we go larger than that? Do we want to go?
So the method is appointed by the council. But do we have to say the method of power choosing?
Yes.
Like I don't see.
That's in the law. Yeah, that's in the law. Here, they're talking about, you know, the number of people. It's this many should be appointed this way. This many will come this way. So they do lay out how it's, how it's to be done.
Right, but if we're going through that process of mailing a postcard, like those details don't need.
No, so you don't realize.
Right.
No, you could say.
Appointed by.
Nine people appointed by, you know, or.
Right.
Nine people appointed by the council or by the mayor, nine chosen.
Through the civic lottery process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you identify the process, but no, you don't.
I don't want details.
I go into the details, but we don't need to in the law.
And to, sorry.
So the mayor will be getting appointments to this?
That's our choice.
Or, oh, sorry.
It's our choice. And in most cities, it depends on where they are. The mayor will have, you know, a vote, you know, as, you know, we did say two at-large at one of the meetings, you know. And so the mayor could be one, Andrea one. You know, each, each one of the older people won. That's what we were talking, sort of talking about in the first meeting that we had. But we didn't finalize it. We were just throwing out that number and then alternates. And she also said that when they went through the civic lottery process, they ended up with a total of 10, but they ended up also with seven alternates because they felt that if somebody had a family, you know, if somebody couldn't continue in the role, they wanted to have other people who were attending, just like we have alternates on our boards and commissions.
Right, so they didn't necessarily have to choose then, right? Like they had enough that they got out of the lottery?
Yeah, they had 10, 10 who came out of the lottery and then another seven who were alternates that also came out of the lottery.
Okay, so we're gonna pull how many out of the lottery and how do we divide it up?
That's the question. How do we divide it up? You know, this is a hybrid process. Some communities do all, you know, the lottery, but it seems like this, the hybrid process was exciting. Let's say that their community responded well.
Right.
Hybrid process because there was both appointments and there was this other aspect to it that went beyond the usual suspects who get engaged in government. So she recommended that. Do you have any sort of question?
Sure.
Mike, those things I've been reading of the people's charges, always a referendum at the end, which goes to the polls.
Yes.
How do you determine everybody knows what's going on? What the different options are? Like this is A and this is B. How did that get out? And I know there's gonna be people coming to talk about paid manager, city manager.
Of course.
So that's another, how would you address that and all of this?
Well, I think that, that's why we're appointing this commission and they're gonna determine all of this. Like we're not really.
When Famon left out, they're gonna want a voice.
Well, and in fact, every, every person I've talked to, whether it was NICOM or the National Civic League or even, there is, as Georgia said, civic engagement, the community engagement is key. You know, and how you do it, and that's why they're doing these regular community meetings. It's a shorter process. But she said, holding regular community meetings with public input.
That's what you need.
You need, and she said, you get it out also by, through the newspaper, through articles about where things stand, when the next meeting is coming up. You know, and also you could also, now that we have email, encourage people to send in their comments. So maybe do with council meetings, send in their public comments for review by the commission.
And will the mayor have veto power? That's gonna be the next question.
No.
Just a little checking. Okay, because I've been asked and we've been talking about it.
Council is setting it up.
The count, right, they're right. Yeah, because there are three ways you can set up a commission. By referendum, where the voters set it up. Mayor can appoint it or the council can set it up. And so we have chosen that method, the council setting it up. And it's just like, like the planning board. You know, the planning board makes decisions and the mayor. and the mayor doesn't be in that and the council doesn't even weigh in on that.
That's what I said, that would be especially if we're talking about the job of somebody who's in power right now. You want to be sure that it's even going forward, that nothing hinders the process.
Correct. Is that, are you supposed to?
That's, is that off? So we're really just, we're not here to talk about the substance of the charter. Again, we're here to talk about setting up what the review of the charter. So on that topic, um, I don't think we need so many alternates. I think realistically, I think that's asking a lot of people to just wait in the wings for something that's not going to happen. So I think two alternates is plenty. And I also think of, or it should probably be nine numbers. There's a lot of research that shows that that's the most effective size for. It's nine, you'd be larger, it can easily distract it. I also don't necessarily think that we need more representation, geographic representation. I think that, you know, that if a qualified person from the fourth ward is there, I think that's sufficient if there is nobody from my ward. Not that I think that that would be the case, but I just don't think that gee, like we're not a huge city in the sense that, you know, like Ulster County does, you know, the size of Rhode Island has geographic distinctions sometimes, and that makes sense. But for a city that takes 25 minutes to walk across it, I don't think we necessarily need geographic parameters like that. And, and I think the less prescriptive we are in terms of establishing the members, I think is.
Right.
Is for the best.
Well, I, I think, um, we could, we don't have to decide this for purposes of this, of this law. You know, the criteria for selection, we just, oh yeah, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes I'm not feeling that some of the laws. Albany did.
Albany did.
And they had a little bit of, um.
References, you think, was there any of that? Right. Cause I think, um, we, we addressed that in our first meeting.
We can, we can also, we can say things that we would like to be geographic representation. We don't have to specifically say which board is one.
Right, yeah.
We can also say, we would like it to reflect the membership of the community without saying it's got to have seven people this group from 12, that group or whatever.
Right. Yeah. And one, and it, one that I read said that when you like, say nine people were choosing, you didn't have to necessarily choose from your district. I could choose one from Ward one or.
Cause you knew something, yeah. Right.
Yeah. But I know somebody in Ward six.
Hmm. But we would still have an application process.
Yeah.
But if they don't make, so if these people that we're hypothetically speaking of right now, if they don't make that civic lottery, get pulled from the civic lottery, then they wouldn't.
Well, there would be.
This, we're talking about potentially. Oh, okay.
Some would be appointed, right? And then some would be through the process, the, the, um, the randomized, the, uh, sorting process.
What is it?
Sortition.
Sortition, that means presence of sorting laws.
Yeah. Greek democracy.
Right. And I think what we had talked about actually in our meeting on May 29th was we were thinking about having someone who would be a Spanish speaker, someone who's a person of African descent, both renters and homeowners, people who are long-term residents as well as newcomers, a balance of age or gender.
Right. But that's, I think that's too specific.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Albany says it's the intent, so the council to form a commission that adequately represents the diverse population and viewpoints in the city of Albany, including recent.
I liked it.
I think those.
Yeah, that's efficient. Yeah. And then the discussion about who the people are, you know, the rest of the criteria would come out and we see what the applications. So that we would get, so they were being balanced.
It's also the intent of the council that the Albany Charter Revision Commission subject its findings and recommendations to public scrutiny and discussion on an ongoing basis throughout its term. Commission shall, should base its recommendations on the long-term best interest of the city.
Online. So I think you, you, Randy has liked the Albany.
Yeah, I just do.
Okay. So maybe we should look at that.
Bob, did you see it? Oh, Bob, I have his hand up. Sorry about, hello.
No problem. Um, and this is probably an easy question that everybody's already considered. The, my presumption is that to be on the commission, you're going to have to be a city resident.
Right. I would, I would say so. Yes.
Right. A city resident, not to, right. To me, that's, that's important.
A city resident, yes. Now they had, yeah, I guess the number of commission members, Albany had 19 members. I think nine might be, I think we can go larger than nine, because we were talking more about 18 or four.
County was something.
But, why, we don't have to do what the county does.
Fair enough. That's something I love about it. Things too, well, in the, in the, um, in the trainees that I did as a technician were, they were saying, well, six, cause six is the ideal number for the breakout groups. So maybe it could be five or six, but, um, so I think at the very least you could want 12 people. Um, so you have two effective breakout groups. But why do we need to have, why does this commission need to have breakout groups? Can't just, the commission do its work without. Because if you have nine and you don't have any breakout groups, that's too many for an effective discussion. You also, you know, also there's a kind of fermentation element. So if you have breakout groups, then it allows for, um, different points of view to rise up. If everybody's in the same group, you might end up with this situation where you've got one kind of alpha person and they sort of start to run the show. And then, you know, people just fall in line with that. So by having breakout groups, you allow for a wider appreciation of points of view.
The other thing I would say is that because this is a citywide process and it's so critical to have people engaged, nine people is not a lot of people, maybe only 25,000. You know, I think it would be, I'd like to, I'd like to see a broad that way. There could be more diversity, um, the group that he had. And I'm not saying we need 40 people, but you know, it's like, I think that there would be, I think we could have more than, more than nine.
Yeah. And I think also there's an element here of being democratically representative. I don't, I, I think that it would be important for us to reflect as much as possible the various constituencies of the city. And so by having a sensible number, but larger than nine, that this would enable us to be sure that we're reaching lots of different constituencies and really be reflective of the city at large. I mean, another way to think about it is, you know, we're 23,000 people. Um, point one percent of that would be 23 people, right? So, um, 24 in that sense might be a good number. To be somewhat statistically representative.
And then there could be four, so six-person breakout groups that could yield some interesting information.
Just, it just, that feels unwieldy to me, like trying.
Yeah, 14 is big. That's why I was saying 18, because then you end up with, you know, even if somebody drops off, you've still got enough people to have three different breakout groups. Um, so, you know, they might go down to five each or something like that, but, um. So anyway, that's what 18 is mine.
Yeah. And I was sort of thinking, maybe there could be, I was thinking a little bit larger, maybe, but, you know, that's like, say 10. Well, if we were taking 11, let's say there are one from each board and plus two at large. Plus we just want to go with nine, either nine or 11, and then equivalent number from the lottery. And then a couple of alternates.
But even, but to speak sort of operationally practically, with so many more people that you need to have a forum for, to arrange a forum for, you know, I would think that the, you know, part of this process is going to have to also be department heads explaining their department and what their role on the charter is. And I think that is easier and more engaging in a, in a group of nine or 11 there on the smaller. I think just, we'll have an easier time making those meetings work for our city employees and having these quorum, having a meeting of quorum on a smaller board. Uh, I think 11 is, you know, if nine is too small, I think 11. And then plus those alternates, sure. Um, but like to get a quorum for 24 people, you know, if they're meeting every week, if they're meeting, you know, well, it's up to them how often they want to meet.
Well, I'm getting, they set up. They don't have to meet every week.
They, they don't, I don't think they have to have a quorum in order to get testimony.
No.
Right. So they have to have a quorum if they're going to be doing deliberation for, you know, votes and that's. But they can collect testimony in, in various ways that would not require a quorum. So.
Yeah. But the quorum would just be for the voting at the end of how, really only come at the end, right? When they're voting to put forward what the decision is, you know, what, what's going to be changed in the code? What needs to go to the public for a referendum? So I don't think they need to vote. The rest of most of it is just information gathering is what I'm understanding. So I don't think you need a quorum for that. And a lot of it could be done also online if people can't be here in person to just hear, just like we have meetings, just like we have our friend Bob who has his hand up. Um, we could, some of it could be done virtually.
Yeah, I'm with Michael. I think a smaller group is more manageable. So I get worried about, you know, 23 comes to mind, right, Michael? Uh, no, I get worried about the, having a large group. So I would be on the side of the nine or 11 as a, as a good sized group, but my two side.
Yeah. I think Randy and I were thinking more, I think the 18, like, cause I think also then, then we're just, we're just picking people. You know, and I think if we're going to have some element of citizen engagement via a civic lottery, we need to have some people who come in that way.
So we've got two sets of interests here. It sounds like one is operational, the other is representation. So let's maybe, I don't know, we can settle at this moment. There are other questions that we need to answer.
So we really only need to have this answered by our next meeting, right? Because that's when we have to vote on it. Michelle, we have our.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
How did it go about this, the first time they did this in 1993 and then it got flipped? How can you avoid that being flipped at the last minute?
It didn't, it was, there was a commission that got voted on. And then when the new mayor came into office, he created another commission.
You gotta be careful. I don't know how long it's going to take you to do this. There's an election coming.
But he did it, that mayor did it after the process was done. It went to the referendum, it went for a vote. He got in office and then did it again. So like, we have no control over that at this point. So.
Yeah, you're going to have to, uh, and also what is your time limit when you want to get this done? You know, people start projects, it turns out to be three and four.
No, we're limited by law. It has to be, that's why we're starting it now to have it done in time for it to be a public referendum in two years.
I, I just have. It would be on the, it would be on the, well, it has to be done by August of 2027 to be on the November 2027.
Okay.
That's assuming that you're doing a major review, you know, that, that requires public referendum and not just simple changes to the program. Yeah. So this is why we're doing, yeah, this is why we're doing it now. And our goal is really to get it done. And, um, okay. So we're not, we're not in agreement on the number.
Right. So maybe let's pull up on that.
So we could hold up on that.
Because the other question would be the method of establishing membership. If we only do nine, then I think that would say we just do appointments.
Right.
Um, and that to me would be a grave, um.
I, I think it would be also, I think this is our one opportunity to reach out to the community beyond our, you know, walls, beyond the people we know that are interested in. Well, who care about Kingston deeply, who may have something to contribute, but haven't really been involved. Or it was not open.
I, I almost feel like if we're going to make that process for half of it, we should do it for all of it. Because we're, it would just be even. I just feel like we're, if we're appointing people, they might not even qualify if they had technically entered the lottery.
Hmm. Well, you would appoint people outside the lottery. You, you'd have two different tracks, right?
Yes. But would the person that maybe Michael wants to appoint, had they applied through the lottery, may not have made it, like they might not have met the qualifications.
Well, it would always take to be one application.
One application.
And then we see all 250 or whatever. And I pick out mine too and say, I wonder if they want these two people, so they get removed from the selection.
Correct. That's right. That, that.
I think that would be the simplest way of thinking about it. I still think the lottery is.
But the, but the truth is, it's not as complicated as you think, because you're creating an application that essentially will ask the same questions that you would be asking, you know, on a, on a form that would go out for people to, you know, send in a regular board or commission application. So.
Yeah. So if I can just ask, going back to this lottery and how Decatur, Georgia did it, it looks like they hired a company that then did it for them, right? And helped guide the whole process.
You can do, you can, yes, they guided the process, but you can do the lottery. There's a, a program called Panelot that assembles panels that you can put in the criteria. And so you can do it on their own, but they had helped developing the criteria, coming up with the outreach method. Um, yes, they hired and that's why I've sort of given this.
Right.
Yes. The different sort of ways in which.
How much did the panel lot cost?
Oh, it's free.
That's free. Okay.
I mean, nothing is over free, right? You know, you know, when somebody submits their, when somebody submits their resume, you know, I don't know this company, they could be cooperating with unsavory agents.
So that's, it's, oh, it wasn't really a resume.
It's, it's like, well, I, I mean, it's, you know.
It was a lot of, it was about a resume. Yeah. It was about.
Consequences of these third-party suppliers and the shitty things that they can do, you know? It's like, to me, it's putting a lot of trust in algorithms and robots and third-party.
I don't think they asked for resumes. I think it was more, what they were focusing on is the diversification of people. And then they would put in, you know, I don't know. I didn't see the actual survey to see whether it was a resume.
Google.
So, all right. So would it be like, we would send them our list of, um, registered voters? And they, we could ask them just to pull out certain names, certain, give them criteria first?
You'd give them criteria first. And that's what the consultants in Decatur did was help them come up with the criteria and the application.
That's not panel, I took up for panel lot.
Oh, for panel lot? No, because I went online and basically you, you send them the criteria, you send them the list and, and then they sort it. But it's, it's people who have applied through, I mean, your applicant, sorry, the applicant pool. Like Decatur had 125 people in their applicant pool. So the pan, panel lot sorted through those 125 people, based it on the number of, they wanted to, as I said, 50% women, they wanted certain representation, um, age range, things like that. People that answered those questions and then it generated a list based on those questions. So there was no, you know, sort of subjective viewing of a resume. So I don't know what all questions were. That's something that, but it was mostly to find diversity. And assuming also that you, you know, that anyone who was willing to sign up for a year and a half and who's willing to attend all these meetings and, you know, had, has filled out the application form, they may not, you know, they have the professional experience necessarily, but they're representative of the community, which is why Decatur then had half of their people, you know, selected via the, the application form that looked at professional qualifications. But we're talking about systems, right? So we're not really looking.
Well, you have to be a citizen to sit on this commission.
Oh, sorry. We're talking about residents. You have to be a resident to be in the commission. So, yeah, so we're talking about residents. It's not like the planning board are making you look so much architectural, you know, experience. You know, it's, it's, um, everybody here has experience with our government in one way or another, positive or negative.
Yes, something out there, um.
And, and consultants were there to guide the commission to, to ask the questions, the hard questions about, here's how, fine, like here's how government operates, here's how this is done here. These are some options for doing it differently. So, um, you don't meet people who have government experience necessarily. Um, we're governed by our residents.
So the panel lot.
By the people, right?
Facebook page has this whole paper that they've written, um, and published on Nature Magazine, their algorithms for selecting citizen assemblies. And it goes very much into their algorithmic framework, their deployable selection of an algorithm. And how, how do they do this? So I, I just, I don't see much about them necessarily. There's like, it says it's a non-for-profit. They have some board members, but there's not.
Something in the state.
I, I do. I, there's not a lot on their page about. They are.
Well, yeah, that would be, that would be a little bit down the road.
Yeah.
Thinking about. So I don't know if this, then we can hinge on this, but, because the other thing, the Decatur, they hired, what was the group?
The National Civic League, which is.
NCL, right.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's another thing for us to consider. We want to hire a consultant who can handle the majority, the bulk of the process. And then if that's the case, there's other questions, which would be like, what kind of budget would we think would be appropriate? And then there's also the question of if the council is developing this process, how, what, what process do we actually have for signing contracts, setting up a budget, and hiring a consultant? Because normally the way our system is here, because of the current charter, all that's handled through the mayor's office. And so then is that a question, we get like a handshake deal, the mayor, you know? You know, I'm not sure how that would work.
I guess that's another question to, to investigate. How would we be able to employ somebody to come in as, employ one or more people to come in as consultants to help us?
Yeah, what's our, what's our authority to hire a consultant?
Right. And if we don't have any, then we really need a budget, I mean, that's for sure.
But this is something to investigate in the next month. Right, and as far as budgets, again, I've been asking about budgets, and when I talked to Nikon, they said that the budgets range anywhere from nine to nine thousand, ninety thousand dollars. Now, clearly, the Decatur people went, you know, full course, they got full on, they got ninety thousand dollars to have them come in and run the whole process and organize seven, you know, meetings and do everything. But they have, you know, there are different things. You can, you can go to them and say, here are the things we'd like you to do for us. What kind of a proposal could you give us? And they have ranges between, I mean, they've been giving me advice free of charge until now. But to go to the next step, they have, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars where they help you set up the public survey, and they sort of give you advice on, on all of that, but it's virtual. They don't come to where you are. It's the travels where you are that gets expensive for me. And then the next range is thirty, sixty thousand dollars, and that's where they, you know, are there in person and have a bunch more hands-on driven than advisory sort of will. And then, you know, full on, they do everything.
Right, and I think when we have to do an RFP as well and go.
There are, there's a number of other consultants who agree with this, so.
And is the RFP process only above a certain amount? I mean, if we were going to be doing it below a certain amount, I don't.
That's another issue of authority. I'm not sure if we have the authority to put out an RFP or it has to go through the administration, the mayor's administration.
Because I know the county up to a certain amount doesn't have to go through an RFP process.
Because those are in charter.
Because that's in the charter. Because we need to look at our charter and see what they say about RFPs and what's required. We do have our financial, didn't John come and talk to us at one point about our, about issue, about a protocol for hiring consultants? Financial procedures manual, is that part of the charter or doesn't? Separate?
No, that's separate.
Yeah, okay, financial procedures.
The, unless it's a sole proprietorship who is uniquely qualified, you're going to have to go through an RFP process for any significant project over, like, five grand. That's state law. You're, you're going to be bound to a process that's, that requires an RFP and an evaluation or a bid. If it's a technical service, theoretically, you could do a bid, which I think would be a terrible idea, but you could. So you're not, you're gonna, you're gonna end up with an RFP process that somebody has to manage.
But I think too, we're not limited to, we're not required to take the lowest bid, right? Something like this, we can still make a decision. We would just have to be able to just, I mean, we could choose, as we get, we could choose the supplier that we like best. We would just have to be able to justify, right? He asked.
Did you hear the question, Bob? Did he disappear?
How about that? Yes, you can use a, you can do, use RFP process, you can use the best value procurement. Because it's not a professional service, licensed profession in the state of New York, you can use a, it's a, it's, you can use a best value procurement, which includes cost and proposal, and you can make a decision on, based on proposal. You know, whoever's got the best proposal that you like. So you're not bound by costs.
No, you mentioned something, sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Oh, you mentioned something about whether somebody is uniquely qualified.
Right. If you do a sole source procurement, you can do that, yeah, with, with state law, but it's not necessarily easy, and the comptroller has to bless it. I think you'd be hard pressed to find somebody who's a sole source to do this kind of work. I think, I think there are other people out there that do it. So I think a best value procurement would be the way that I would go.
So then that's still a decision that's, that we have to make. And one other question that I think we need to answer too is whether we would, if we're okay with relying on corporation council office to be our lawyer through this process, or if we feel like we need to hire a lawyer who might have specific expertise in this area, then that would be another issue.
Yes. And again, talking to the people I've talked to, they said typically a city will use its own council. But in our case, because our council is so well with a lot of tabs, I think that would be very, I'd be the good itself for that.
That seemed to be really actionable.
Yeah.
I floated to anything else.
And it would be good to have somebody who has a specialty in expertise.
Get it right the first time.
Bob?
Yeah, now a lawyer, because that's a professional service, you can do an RFP and you don't have to do a best value. You don't have to consider money. You can consider qualifications alone. A qualifications-based selection is, is okay under New York State Finance Law for professional services, and a lawyer would count as a professional service. So you can hire a lawyer.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
But we would still put out an RFP.
No, we wouldn't.
No, you wouldn't have to put out an RFP. Not for the lawyer. Okay.
No, you'd still have to do an, you'd still have to do an RFP for the lawyer. You just get to pick them based on the RFP. You don't get to just, you know, go to Joey down the street. You got to actually do an RFP.
But you're picking the person on the basis of qualification.
Right, it's a qualifications-based selection, QBS.
Okay.
I'm scaling.
Okay, so the question is, so we have the number of members, how they're selected, what kind of advisory assistance we need that will lead to a budget. If we do a postcard mailing, we can send out information about that, some resubmissions usually to mail to the, send to households in Kingston. There are about twelve thousand postcards that go out. And that, I think in the past, has cost them about twenty-five hundred dollars for a four-by-six postcard. It should be fine. So that's another budget.
You know, and, and just looking at the charter, I, I just don't see language that actually says we shouldn't be able to have these things. It's just like the mayor is, you know, the general manager of the city. She's chief executive officer. Appoint officers here under specified, maintain the peace, good order, and prosperity of the city. Take that within said city laws and state and ordinance of the common council and the Board of Health are enforced. So when we're passing this local law, shouldn't there just be money attached to it and then we can work with that? It's like, you know what I mean? If we can, we get built into next year's budget.
It would still require purchasing department to advertise the RFP.
Yeah, but I, I'm just seeing like, I don't see language that says we can't.
We can hire anybody.
Right. So we need to have a discussion with our comptroller.
Right?
The question comes down to who signs the contract. And the only people, the only person I know that can execute a contract is the mayor. Or his delegates. There's nobody on the common council that can enter into a contract.
Right. How about our comptroller?
Well, he might be able to.
Certain contracts perhaps.
Well, this is why, this is why we might need to consult a lawyer on these particular things. Because as far as I understand it, also cannot compel the mayor to, his department heads to do work. Right? So we can't say, well, we want the clerk to send out these postcards. The mayor, the mayor has to be the one who says that. So part of this means, you know, seeing down playing with the mayor, seeing where he's at with this.
Right.
And then, I think another thing would be to leave open the number of people in the committee for the council, for the laws and rules meeting. We can find a poll, see where they are with that. So that we can try to come up with a number of that. At least the majority would be comfortable with, you know, that going in at the end of the vote, right? So in general, we all agree that the Albany model looked in some ways like the best one.
Yeah, I think it did.
So I would be happy to do it over the next week or two, but I'm willing to go through that one and, you know, revise it in ways that make it ethical, that pays.
Oh, that'd be great.
Everyone. And then see, with the question that we've got, where we still have issues to put in and questions to answer.
That's a, that's a great offer. I think we should accept that one. Yeah.
No, my thoughts is.
Right, and it doesn't, yeah, exactly. Okay. Or a dash. So, okay. So on our to-do list really is figuring out, is trying to speak with the mayor and getting his idea about going forward and there's going to be a budgetary impact also.
Right, and think about, well, so we have to, we have to, you know, part of the question to consider is, do we want a consultant to work through the entire process? Do we want somebody just to set it up and then somehow else we manage the process? So those are the questions to answer.
Right.
The other thing is, you know, like, Tom, I don't know if Phil Lindsay at Bard is the person who would be best in the area to talk about some of this, or, you know, that we could bring in, that's something to talk to. Because he's the one who's organized a number of these seminars on citizen assemblies, tradition. It might be somebody else that they know that we could ask to just give a digital overview. So if people are interested in that, I can try to also, if that, get somebody to figure that out, especially before the next laws and rules. Although.
I mean, I would be willing to go speak to the mayor. There are other people who'd like to go with me. I mean, I'd be happy to, to talk with him. Just feel out, but. I talk to him all the time about wearing white shoes.
Our, our next, next laws and rules meeting is the twentieth, right? Okay, all right.
That's August twentieth.
Yeah, that could be.
Excellent.
So could we have the meeting three hours later than usual? So I'll be on.
Sorry, I think I was behind some of yours.
Well, I think it should be a few people that go in to have that meeting.
That's what I was thinking. Should I call some of our other colleagues who are not here?
No, it should be one or two.
Yeah. Okay. So who would like to go with me?
Well, I think it was a good idea, so let's go.
Yeah, I'll go. So maybe the three of us can go?
Yeah. When are you leaving?
On the.
August twelfth?
Yeah.
Oh, so. And I'm actually going from August sixth to the eleventh.
So before August sixth?
Before August sixth.
So next week, yeah, next week.
Okay, so I'd be that far into, yeah, it's gonna be quickly. Okay, so next week.
And I, I think it would be beneficial to, for the mayor to put his opinion, to show the whole council, so. Maybe lots of transparency or something. Yeah.
Okay.
Because he should have some say in these processes, he's the one who wants to execute it. Whatever the final product, looking at also what.
And he was an elected official.
He was on record in twenty twenty saying that, you know, on it.
Right.
Yeah.
So do you want me to reach out and include the two of you and we'll set up, see what's, I can talk to Lloyd and just see what his schedule?
Yeah, if you can get like maybe three possibilities.
Okay. Okay, so I will do that.
And early in the day works, maybe even more nine works for me.
Yeah, my schedule is. Okay, okay, so we'll do early in the morning.
Yeah, early or end of day.
Earlier than we think, okay.
I prefer later in the day, but.
I can do that.
You can do like.
Yeah, about four thirty.
Yeah, four thirty. Okay. Someday. Okay, next week. Okay, that's great.
August first, which is Friday.
So avoid August first.
No, actually, Friday. It'd have to be after.
Not at four thirty.
Well, let me see. Oh, yeah, it could actually be thirty on Friday. I'm sorry about, I'm fixing it in the airport. They don't get into eight o'clock.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's maybe six, so sorry.
Four thirty, Friday, August first. I can check that out. I can throw that out as a possibility.
But you're, I want to be flying, man.
I'm not flying.
Oh, I was going to say the airfare.
How about Friday morning early, if you're looking at?
I have an appointment for ten to eleven, but I can remember that.
Or we can meet at like eight thirty, is that what you're talking about? So we could, so basically, eight thirty, so eight thirty or four thirty on Friday, August. Okay. I've got two dates already.
Yes. So just on this topic with the mayor, in the Albany language, you know, the, the mayor, the council, the president get appointment powers, and if somebody doesn't approve something, then it triggers something else. There's no language in there if the mayor doesn't end up appointing their people. So like, we need to have that it doesn't stall out. Like, if people don't make their appointments, that we don't end up with.
I see. But the commission can.
Yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Bob?
Nope.
He just volunteered to write the RFPs.
Yeah, bro.
I believe that only people who are stationed in New York at the moment should write the RFP.
I'll get right on it.
All right, okay. So six nineteen, and can I get a motion? Good. Uh, so six nineteen, and can I get a motion to dismiss?
Motion second.
Third. Fourth. Dismissed, adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Quanay. We'll see you in a few minutes. See you.
Bye. Okay.